Well, it's just me today, so no quorum, no decisions to be made, but we'll still discuss the business. We'll still tape it and broadcast it live so the public can be involved. And hopefully, the commissioners could sit at home and creep on us and figure out what's going on so they're ready for an educated vote tomorrow. So, Madam Clerk, I guess, no need to call roll, but Denny Malloy present. Okay. Dispend with reading in the minutes, approve the bills. Number three, approve the Valley Vision 2050 allocation, the amount of a million dollars, for $500,000 to be paid in December of 2023 and the remainder to be paid in June of 2024, with the option to opt out of payment of the second installment based on a performance review. The goal of Valley Vision 2050 is to stabilize and expand existing businesses, increase public awareness of the arts and cultural industries, increase public participation in workshops through workforce training, expand education employment opportunities, and increase stability of nonprofit organizations and businesses. The group seeking the funds include representatives of Eastgate, Valley Partners, West Reserve Port Authority, Youngstown Foundation, Youngstown Warren Regional Chamber, and Martha came up with what fund that it will come from. And we're doing this, Moonee County did a million. We wanted to make sure we were included. It's a full partner with us, with the board seat decision making. And after six months, we'll be able to evaluate the makeup of the board, the progress they've made, the employees they've hired, the direction they're going, and get a clear view of making sure it is as good an investment for the valleys, I believe it is. This is something that I think it's just taking our money and letting it grow. Instead of sitting in a bank waiting for us to allocate it somewhere else, we're gonna entrust this group to help us grow financially, help attract new business, help strengthen our subsidiary support groups like nonprofits, and hopefully get everybody on the same page, moving the valley forward together. Instead of a bunch of people heading in different directions, I think this is gonna be a huge asset, something we're gonna look back on and be thankful that we had the opportunity to do this a couple of years from now. So, that'll be for tomorrow. Any questions on that? We discussed in last week's meeting, and that's where we came up with the agreement of the half and half. We had the presentation last week also. Number four, transfer monies, the amount of $500,000 from one fund to another, and to increase appropriations in this fund, by the $500,000 to be used for the allocation. Monies will be payable to West Reserve Port Authority. That's gonna be the stewards of the money for this group. Martha, you wanna pay that this year, right?
Yes.
We'll cut that check before the first of the year, unless that makes a difference on your books and audits.
Martha, does that look okay the way it's on there?
Yeah, I think so. I'm gonna check with Christie, and I'm gonna make sure that we're correct on the 2020 or 2023. I believe that's what we decided.
If there's any change on that, let Lisa know.
I will.
It looks pretty good. Okay, number five, this involves the Planning Commission. There are three members up for reappointment. I've been to most all of the Planning Commission meetings, as Commissioner Ken La Mesa. And these three are all assets, I believe, to the board, Bob Moody, Melissa Miller, and Rachel Nader. I don't think I've seen Melissa or Rachel miss a meeting yet. Mr. Moody's had some other obligations, as some of us have. And that's something that I'd recommend that we reappoint the three of them. One's from Cortland, one is from Kinsman, and one is from Warren. And you concur, Julie?
I do.
Okay.
Not allowed, though.
That's all right. I just wanna see the look on your face, if you're happy or not. That's what matters. We need a board that gets along, that functions well, and... It was a good board meeting today, as we always do. And every meeting I go to, I'm impressed at how passionate these people are to come and do something for free.
Right.
They actually wake up in the morning and come to the meeting with bright eyes and ready to do something. So, excited about that. And then number eight is to appoint somebody to replace Mr. Carpenter, whose term ends December 31st, 2024. So, this will be a little shorter of an appointment, but we need to fill that. He had other obligations. He started another business, which takes him away during the day to be able to attend these meetings. So, we have a board packet with, I'd say, four highly competent people. I have one that I'm gonna recommend in my mind, that I'll recommend. Sir Ken Lacey is not here to discuss with him today, so I'll throw it out there tomorrow and see if anyone on the board concurs with me. But I think we're winner either way with any of the four. One of them stands out as far as some of them would be an active partner and could bring in an awful lot to the table, maybe a little bit more so than the others there as far as experience. So, we'll see how that goes tomorrow. Number nine, approve the signing of a letter of support for Trumbull County Career and Technical Center, request for funds through the Ohio Career Technical Education Equipment Grant Program. And this is for recommendation of the Planning Commission, Julie?
Yes, Paula Backo, Director, requested our support, as well as a letter of support from the commissioners for this particular grant. We had submitted something similar earlier in the year, and the funding was not issued for another program, but they're still trying to go for funding to secure these equipment to add to their programming. And they do have a deadline, so I was hoping to get that signed, letter of support, potentially signed at the meeting tomorrow, if that's possible.
Should be.
So that we can scan it to her. I think we printed it and gave it to you, I believe. Is that possible?
(laughing)
Thanks.
Okay.
They have a grant deadline. I know that a lot of times, people request letters of support and for the last minute. Yeah. And then the next one is also...
Authorizing agreement with YSU in the amount of $11,250 for the analysis of impediments, the fair housing update due honor before July 1st. It's being paid for with BY 2023 Community Development Block Grant Fund 225 and local cost share from the cities of Warren and Niles. I'll explain that later, Julie, if you want.
So, we have a grant agreement for the '23 funding, and this is a requirement for the Community Development Block Grant Program, which includes a number of different grants, fair housing. We are the fair housing point of contact for the CDBG program. And every five years, we're required to do an analysis of impediments to fair housing. The last time it was done was 2019, and so the next is due on July 1 of 2024. And they look at things like discrimination, discriminatory practices in rentals. They look at things like, you know, the availability of safe and affordable housing in our town. And so, there's a number of things that are examined. NIMBY is always a big one, not in my backyard. A lot of people have issue with, you know, providing safe, affordable housing to people with special needs or people with... Mental disabilities. Or even, yeah. It could be any number of things. And so, we're required to take a look at that, to take a look at our conditions. We have a great Trumbull County Housing Collaborative in Trumbull County that works together as a team and has, for the last 25 years, to take care of special populations, people with persistent mental illness, people that are homeless, people that are have disabilities, people that have addiction issues. And so, we're really lucky to have that here, and we'll be definitely bringing them in as a stakeholder. And this will be a combined update with the City of Niles and the City of Warren, who have their own CDBG allocation.
Eleven, accept the proposal for services to propose alterations to the existing Veteran Services Commission building by Phillips Secanic Architects to provide the architectural services necessary for this project free of charge. The alterations would be interior only. It would include the conversion of existing storage areas to restrooms, along with the alterations to convert existing office space to offices and storage area. Changes were discussed earlier this year, and as indicated within the proposal for services, the architects are proposing provide the necessary for this project free of charge, pro bono for the veterans of Trumbull County. So, can't be free. And they designed it initially, from what Herman said. They just never built the bathrooms, but they have them in the design. And I guess they're prepped, ready to go. They're gonna need just some, okay, where exactly do we put it? So, this would be for public bathrooms. Right now, they have bathrooms, but they're in a private area. So, this would be for the veterans to utilize there, or their guests in the waiting, or whatever to utilize. So, can't have a big, beautiful, new building like that without bathrooms, so... Number 12, concur with Trumbull County Engineer and receive the resolution number 2023-145, passed by Howland Township trustees. On September 13th, request the Howland Township number eight bridge renamed Howland Veterans Bridge in honor of those individuals from Howland Township who have served in their country's armed forces. And the Howland Township number nine bridge, we rename the First Responder's Bridge to recognize these individuals who have served Howland Township in their dedicated public service. And to set up a public hearing for the consideration of the bridge name changes, Howland Township number eight, nine bridges are located on North River Road between North Road and State Route 46. The notice setting forth the date, time, and place of this public hearing should be published in the Tribune in accordance with Ohio Revise Code Section 551109.
So, that hearing starts for next Wednesday, the 20th, at 10:00 a.m., prior to the meeting.
Perfect. Hopefully, we can get all three commissioners here for this one. The last couple of bridge naming we did, we only had Commissioner Ken La Mesa and myself. And being that this is veteran-related and first responder-related, I would hope to show a unified, three commissioners approving this or holding the hearing. And we'll see what happens with that. But I will ask both colleagues to be there for this, instead of just the two of us again. Number 13, to approve the personnel action for the employment of Mr. Robert Gilrunin for the position of laborer with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department, effective December 14th, pay range three, 1445 an hour. Pursued his job posting from October 25th through November 2nd. And it was due to employee resignation. Mr. Gilrunin has passed pre-employment drug screen and background check. Bob, how many people did you have apply for it?
We had 37 apply. I contacted 19 of them. I was able to get two people to come in for interviews, and they were both pretty suitable. But Rob Gilrunin has got a lot of maintenance background, and we hope he stays and progresses with us.
All right. Your reputation must precede you if only two came in.
(laughing)
Either that, or Mr. Chicklow wasn't spreading good news.
(laughing)
Number 14.
You've been trying to hire a parent, isn't it? You can't hold anybody back.
He's going in the county Hall of Fame.
(laughing)
Number 14, to accept the maintenance bond, number... That one submitted by Paulwood Land Services for the Heat and Shoot Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project, number five S-13. Wethersfield Township Maintenance Bond is issued by Philadelphia Indemnity Insurance Company, for a period of two years from December 13th to December 12th, 2025, in the amount of $574,161. Paulwood Land Services, Inc. was awarded the construction contract November 23rd. This for recommendation of sanitary engineer.
Yeah, Commissioner, Heat and Shoot is wrapping up. And this is one of the administrative closeout functions, to accept their maintenance bond. I had the original here with me. I was going to go ahead and give that to Lisa. And Julie, I scanned one and sent it over to you for that too, so you can have one for your files.
Thank you.
Pretty good.
Want me to just move on to number 15?
Yeah, 15, authorize Denny Malloy present, Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, submit applications to execute contracts for the House Public Works Commission in regard to state capital improvement program funds for the Crane Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project, number seven S-22, for Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department, and authorize me to act as chief executive officer. Martha Yoder, the chief financial officer. Gary Newborough, sanitary engineers, project manager.
All right, commissioners, this is our, the application I just put into OPWC for this funding, for the next upcoming funding year. And this is Crane Drive, and we've got the pre-approval for the $750,000. I just have to put in the final grant application, and you can see the funding sources listed. And as we get all the, as we secure all the other funding sources, we're looking at almost a $2 million project with less than $300,000 in debt.
Great job, Gary. Looking at this, you got three or four grants in here to make this thing possible. So, I know that it requires a lot of hard work to do that, that doesn't just come automatically.
Right.
You know, so kudos to you and your staff for bringing this free money into the county so we can do projects like this.
Yeah, well, you can see there's $520,000 community development block grant, so Julie's involved in this also, her and Emily, so they're a big help.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, it's Martha C. Yoder.
Oh, jeez, I am sorry, Martha.
Oh, such a grace, not your...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Shoot, how the type of life I took down.
You know, and there's probably a Martha A. Yoder out there. You really don't wanna be appointed some poor alchemist or something.
And that is very important.
(laughing)
That is very important. In my other life, I do a lot of gun raffles, and when I do them in the alchemist community, and I call, like, Jonas Yoder, I gotta do the middle initial.
Oh, you got the middle initial?
Four people come up and try to claim the gun at one time, I guess.
Yeah, I learned that.
Middle initials are important.
When I got married, I put my middle initial on everything. (laughing)
All right, and Martha, you got...
You still be called Mary Yoder.
Oh, yes. I got, somebody stopped me in the supermarket yesterday, and I, "Are you Mary Yoder?" Go ahead, sorry.
All right, well, I'm just gonna say, you know, sometimes I'll bring an OPWC disbursement request to you.
Right.
This is the resolution authorizing you to sign that.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah, great. Hey, 16, authorize Denny Malloy present on the board to sign and accept for use substantial completion of the Heat and Shoot Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project, number five S-13, located in Wethersfield Township, for recommendation of Gary?
Yes, commissioners, Heat and Shoot again, it's winding down. We've gone out and done the inspections on the new sewer line, did the mandrel, did the televised the lines. One of the delays was getting the pump station up and running. There was a delay in getting some of the parts down there.
I remember that.
But it is fully capable of accepting flow. So, after we pass the substantial completion, that's when we'll send letters out to all the property owners, let them know it's available for connection. On the same token, we have Emily and Julie working with the LMIs, and Bill McCosky of my office, starting to get the scope of work together for the people that are gonna get financial assistance with their connection.
Fantastic.
I thought the bid opening is $19,000, at 3:00 p.m. on a Tuesday?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, number 17, resolution authorize the increase in micro purchase threshold ARPA funds.
Down near the bottom, zoom out.
Counties are required to conduct competitive bidding purchases and contracts. Only purchases exceed $75,000. So, if you're gonna spend ARPA money, you've gotta bid it out for anything over $75,000 for $15. Is that basically what this is saying?
Yeah, this is worked out between Mr. Rosaki and Attorney Rogers. This is what they came up with, and unfortunately, he's not here today yet, but...
Okay. And then number 18, authorize the expenditures for the ARPA fund for the Viana Township Mark's radios. We went over this last week, where they were, we saw that we got an approval. And now, this is the wording to make that possible, to grant Viana Township $26,789 to be used for the purchase of Mark's radios for Viana Township Police Department. And Phil Pegg is here. Phil, you'll have the money from Martha, and how long will this take, Martha, approximately?
Well, that's, a lot has to do with Sarah, but I can authorize emergency stuff so we can get it as soon as Sarah does the account payable, the PO and all of that. That's what we've been doing. So, we'll get it through, as soon as everything's signed, she'll do the PO. So, there's a process where all the, you have to prove everything. There's an agreement that has to be signed by all of you, or by two commissioners in here. And once that's done, she can do a PO.
Perfect. So, hopefully, we'll get those radios for you sometime right after the first of the year?
Phil Pegg, Trumbull Township. Yeah, one of the questions, I know it was, they were trying to do it in Corvus, because each radio, it's $10 a month fee to operate those, but they were trying to reduce it to $5 a month.
Yeah, the governor, when he was here at the 911 Center earlier in the year, he announced that was part of his budget this year, was to lower that fee.
Did it happen?
Well, it probably passed, it was supposed to be in one of the first budget bills, and I believe they passed the budget, so we'd have to check with the operator, or the...
I mean, but they just passed it, right?
Yeah.
So...
Why would that count to a...
I mean, they're still in...
It wouldn't affect, I think, 90 days or 60 days after they passed it. So, we'll have to see where we are with that.
It's a big chunk of change, really. And when you consider you've got the fire department, the police department.
Sure.
And we are, we have our road department on, they're needed for only one radio.
John might have...
Mr. Hickey.
Sorry to put you on the spot, John, but...
Yep, John Hickey, Emergency Management.
Yeah, okay.
The governor was reducing the fees on the Mark's radios from $10 a month to $5 per radio. You know, did that go past, and if that's ineffective?
Yeah, that's...
Oh, great. Yeah.
That's good for all the, all the entities involved stabilized, gave them some money. All right, 19, enter an agreement between Trumbull County Board of Commissioners and Viana Township, that is to do the agreement to cut the check. Number 20, receive the report submitted by Adult Probation Department on November 29th in accordance with amended substitute house bill number 406, specifying the amount of funds appropriated from the probation service fund 041 during the current calendar year. An estimate of the amount of that probation department will expend by the end of the year, a summary of how the amount appropriated has been expended for probation services, and an estimate of the amount of probation fees the probation department will collect and pay the treasurer for deposit the next calendar year. And the summary includes total monies collected, $1.48 million since its inception, and 2023 was $70,000, and for 2024, they're looking at $85,000. And then expenditures, for 2023, $97,000. So, that's just, we should receive the report and put it on file, then, I guess, right? 21, acknowledge retirement of Mr. Vincent Peterson from his position of officer in charge of Trumbull County Adult Probation, retiring December 31st with over 30 years of service. The Board of Commissioners joins the Trumbull County Adult Probation Department paying a fond farewell to Vince. Wish him many years of happiness, good health, and relaxation, which he is most deserving. So, acknowledge the 30 years of service, nice career. And then, we also have acknowledged retirement of Teresa Greathouse, from position of administrative secretary with Adult Probation Department, retiring January 15th with 30 years of service also. And we also wish her many years of happiness, good health, and relaxation. So, a couple of job openings probably coming up in Adult Probation. Uh, twenty-three, authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from A R P funds. This is for the infrastructure for City of Niles, and this is a one-time grant to City of Niles for sixty thousand dollars for the main gate valve replacement project. And, and number twenty-four is to enter the agreement for the sixty thousand dollars in Niles to get them the check for that. And that was approved, uh, earlier in the year, um, and recently approved by Tanya as an allowable expense. So that closes out the regular agenda items for tomorrow. Um, anybody have anything from the floor? We did talk last week about the, uh, the bid irregularity with, uh, the engineer's roof, and we voted in the meeting, uh, the next day to go ahead and rebid it and, um, rescreen to keep them in accordance. We, it was our mistake where we, we advertised one way with certain questions, we left a question out when they actually did the bid process, uh, which we felt was wrong, a mistake on our part. Uh, so we needed to correct the wrong, we knew that it was gonna upset some people and ruffle some feathers, but in the business of doing things correct in the right way, we had to fix our mistake. Uh, since then, I've been contacted by a couple of the parties involved. Of course, nobody's happy about it, well, some more than others, but, um, there was a recommendation that was brought up to me yesterday that I'd like to propose to my colleagues when we get the chance. As they rebid it, they felt it would be only fair to already give credit for what was done and not allow anyone to change the first five segments of it, and just review the sixth question that was left. Um, because now everybody knows the questions, they know where they were deficient, they know where they need to make things up, and technically, if you get a copy of the test first and you get to look at it, and then you take it, everybody should get a hundred percent. So where's the fairness in something like that? Um, I'd like to see different screeners screen it, and I, I think, um, with a blend of the input I got from all the entities, I, I would like to see if, um, as it's re-screened, we do some type of interview process, because I believe some of the questions are a little subjective, that if the entities would have the opportunity to justify their responses in person, as far as their experience, um, it would shine a brighter light on their overall experience that they have, or the overall qualifications that they have. Some of the questions might be a little tainted or slanted, uh, towards just dealing with government work with Trumbull County before. Um, one of the entities brought up to me that they had experience working on military contracts and with other entities, other governmental agencies besides us, and they don't know if that question actually fits in yet still with what their experience is, and I, I have to agree, uh, that I think we need to handle this situation in future, uh, bids like that a little, uh, a little more, little more carefully, um, so that we don't get in a situation again and have a protest or contest. Um, I heard some good stuff that, hey, sometimes you win, sometimes you lose, you move on to the next bid, but in a real world, I can understand if people feel like they were treated unfairly or something was left out, or they're wronged by government, that they want what's fair. And, and, and I wanna aim for fairness in everything we do, um, as much as we possibly can. So that's something I'll have to address with Mr. Slinski, Mr. Hart, and, uh, um, my colleagues, uh, on the Board of Commissioners, so that when this thing comes in, we, we do it the fairest way possible, so, uh, as so please as many people that apply as possible with this. Not gonna have a perfect scenario on this, but we're gonna try the best we can. And of course, dealing with the prosecutor, they're more worried about limiting liability, and that's kinda what they did, what they did, but I still think that could be amended a little bit more to make sure the people that already applied get a fair shot, or as fair of a shot without someone from the outside coming in, or, um, or feeling like they're getting screened wrong, so that's something I'll have to deal with, with them. And I wish Mar was here for that, but he's not. Phil Hart, you any input on that? Good answer.
What am I gonna do?
Good answer. Um, yeah, but, um, yeah, that goes, I guess. Okay, who's got something for us? Yes, sir, Gary.
Yeah, Commissioner, just a reminder, the Philville Drive public hearing is Thursday night at seven P M. At, uh, Vianna High School, or Matthews High School in Vianna. And I think you mentioned to me before that you may not be able to attend.
Uh, it looks like I, I will be able to attend there.
All right, okay, that's good news.
So-
'Cause that resolved my other issue I was going to have if you weren't there.
Okay.
So if you're there, we don't have an issue.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I know, uh, Commissioner Camalice is out sick today. I can't predict how sick he is, or, you know, but he, he did lean towards, he'll see us tomorrow. Seems like an email or whatever when he called off us, to Louis Lisa, so I would, uh, hope that, you know, he's healthy and you have a full board again.
Okay.
Things like this, there's three Commissioners for a reason, all three of us need to be there for this, that's what we get paid to do.
Okay.
So, um, that's, I changed my plans for that, uh, after reconsidering, so.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Who's next? What's going on on the E M A. front? Any word on finding that command vehicle yet, John Hickey? January, you think you'll find it?
Well, we're gonna have to bid it out, yeah. You should have, uh, package for, for the whole.
Okay. Hello, I'll get to you in a second when we get to questions. Uh, anything on the H R. front?
I have a lot, um, just a lot of updates. I plan to get everything out over email, Alexandra Duvan Johnson Bush, Human Resources Director. Uh, Friday, I went to Columbus for our C L C C A., it's called Quika. Thursday, Corso, it's, uh, County Loss Control Coordinat- Coordinators Association, 'cause that's, I had to write it down, 'cause even I'm not sure what the heck that stands for. Um, so a lot of work that I'm gonna be doing partnering up with, John, I'm so glad you're here, uh, just making sure we have all of our emergency plans in place. If we don't, what does H R. need to do to help get some? Uh, exit strategies, tornado strategies, fire drills, all of that, just things to make sure, I know we're compliant with it, but just making sure that we have all that, um, because it does affect our premiums as well. So, um, also maybe coming to the Commissioners after the first of the year at the reorganization meeting, um, asking you guys to really align on who is making the call, right? So if there is an, an actual emergency in this building, we can't do the round robin crap of, I gotta call this person and call that person. If there is an active shooter in this building, if there is a act of God in this building, a natural act of God, which is gonna happen at times, if there's a public irate, you know, we're not gonna be doing this, I'm calling this person and make sure I can go home, and vice versa. And to be quite frank with you, we have had things like that happen before. So we do need to talk about, are you giving H R. the administrative authority to do that? You know, if I feel that there's a safety issue, am I allowed to make that decision? I don't know, but I'm gonna be putting that on you guys to make that decision, okay?
I did talk to C C A. O. yesterday just about that exactly. And they, um, and basically what I talked to them about yesterday, I talked to John down there about the availability for Commissioners during emergency situations to act.
Yep.
And he said, uh, anything, a lot of stuff that's administrative, said you have to act on it.
Yep.
You have to make a decision, whether you have one Commissioner, two Commissioners, three. There are situations, weather-related.
Yep.
Uh, emergency-related, it could be anything from, like you said, an active shooter in the building-
Sure.
-to a broken water pipe that's flooding.
Absolutely, it could be anything.
On, on area.
Right.
But there are administrative decisions that, there is plenty of case law-
Sure.
Uh, where C C A. O. would back up a Commissioner making a decision.
Good.
Or talking with another Commissioner and jointly making a decision, um, not in violation of sunshine law, but when it's an administrative decision and not a legislative one, um, they, they would back us up on that stuff. And they said they've testified themselves in regards to that stuff before too. Um, so you have to have the ability to do that. We are administrators first, above and beyond legislators, so I felt pretty good about that. They're gonna send me some things in writing there also. Um, I, I think I got one, I saw one on the email this morning, I haven't read it yet, but I saw it just came in right before the meeting started.
Very good.
Um-
No, I'm glad that you guys are having those conversations, if not, I was gonna have them with you, so, I mean, I would-
Well, we still need to have them with you too, because we may need to delegate that. You're here every day, and when it's H R. related stuff-
I am here every day, and I-
In the absence of a Commissioner being here.
You know, and I, I mean, we had a, an employee incident two weeks back, you know, where something did happen, and thank God I was over there at the time, that was just a true, again, another act of God, that I was just there at that time. But it really did reiterate to me that we really need to make sure we have a plan in place for everything, and anything can happen anytime, so you just gotta be prepared. And that's also part of my job as Human Resources Director, right? Health and safety and all that stuff too, so gotta do what you gotta do. Um, so a lot of work coming, a lot of work coming down the pike for January, um, with that, you know, A E D. machines, making sure we have all those up to date, all of the little things that go into just health and safety, fun stuff. Um, and then, as if that wasn't enough on Friday, Frank Hadfield, who is the, uh, Head of Loss Control, actually came and gave me the visit yesterday, which was very fruitful, uh, some good news there actually, which is great. Um, so we do have some work to do on a couple initiatives. Um, multi-factor authentication is a big one. I'm working with Tim and Auditor Yoder, um, it's the new norm. So if you go to Google, even Google wants you to multi-factor identify yourself. So it's the new norm that's coming down the pike, Corso's offering big rebates. Um, the more entities that use M F A. protects us from cyberbullying, protects us from, you know, phishing, spyware, spam, all that fun stuff. So we do have to continue to show an effort that we're working towards that slowly but surely, uh, before they mandate it. So they're kinda giving us the heads up of, this is coming down the pike, this is the new norm, this is the tech field, you know, so on and so forth. Um, if you do it now, we'll continue, we're, we're incentivizing you now, versus when we get to the point where you have to have it or we won't cover you, so just a heads up on that. Um, of course, something really exciting is auto and fleet, um, we're doing really well in insurance-wise. So congratulations to everybody who drives cars, county cars, um, keep up the good work. That's amazing, I was actually really surprised to see that with the amount of cars that our county has, and in big vehicles, and, and, I mean, great job. Um, of course, we have some areas of opportunity when it comes to property and employment. Um, those are our two kinda heavy hitters, okay? Uh, law enforcement's doing pretty well too, so kudos to them, our jail. Uh, we've had very minimal claims recently, so big, big, big thing there, 'cause as we know in jails, one claim could, that could be it, right? Um, so lots of good stuff, we just have to continue working together. If you have any questions about insurance or anything like that, please reach out to us. We're gonna be sending out a bunch of kinda F Y I. emails and trainings, and just please take a look at them, share them with your people. That's what we're here for. Call us if you have any questions.
Julie Green, I just have a follow-up statement more so than a question with the multi-factor.
Yeah.
So because of the number of different and varied grants that we administer, that is something that I'm required to use my personal cellphone for, and so-
Yeah.
I don't know if that is the route.
It is the case, yeah.
And so what I've brought up in the past is, I'm required to put my personal cellphone number into every single one, and, you know, as an individual employee, I can only speak for me, but I don't know if that's going to be an issue for others.
It's not. I actually talked, well, it, it could be, right, it could be an issue, but it won't be. So I talked as well yesterday with Frank Hadfield, so there is case law, enough case laws, the stuff that's coming out as technology is advancing, that shows that just using your phone, your personal phone, simply for an M F A. type of, you know, multi-factor authentication, does not subject your personal phone to open records law. So that is an amazing thing, um, if you're just simply using it to push that button for M F A.
Okay.
You're not subjecting yourself. Now, if you're using it for other things, I can't help you with that, right? But, um, there is case law that so far is, you know, able to back that up, thank goodness, because that is gonna be our biggest pushback, especially from unions, right? You're telling me I can't be on my cellphone, but yet you want me to authenticate. It takes two seconds, as you know, you're literally just pushing a button. Unfortunately, uh, we don't have, and neither does the state of Ohio, nowhere do they have it, some other way around it. You have to tie it back to a cellphone, it's an app, you have to be able to accept that, you know if you do it, what I'm talking about, so-
Yeah, again.
Yeah, there's really no way around it.
There, there might be an added cost, there might be employees who refuse to use, just saying, bringing it up as a-
Yeah.
Pot- potential on the road.
No, it, it's a good point, and I talk to them about that, especially with the unions. And at the end of the day too, judges, if they don't wanna do it all, they have to do it right in order, and they don't have to do it. So I know what I'm working against, it's just, you know, hopefully we can all work together.
This is Tim Ham from Trumbull County I T. Um, to, to that point with, with M F A., one of the, we have been rolling it out with Office three sixty. Uh, we have gotten pushback from a couple individuals, not the departments yet. Hold on, it's gonna be- They, they have given in, said, okay, we can go ahead and do it, um, but we're fully prepared to, you know, attack on it. If they're, these departments are gonna-
Can we get Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, can we get in writing some of the things that you've said as far as, uh, so that, because I think that probably is most of the pushback, is the concern-
I had it from, uh, I have given it, I shared it with him, that it's gonna be mandated come twenty twenty.
No, but-
We're looking at it being mandated come twenty twenty.
That's not what I was asking about.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, about our cellphones not being subject to open records.
I-
'Cause I think that may be part of the pushback for some people at least, that the concern that we would, our phones would be subject-
I mean, I can ask them to put that in writing, I, I, I-
It would be helpful.
I mean, I could just also Google the case law and put it in myself, but I-
Yeah, it would be helpful if you could share that with those when we do get pushback, because I have a feeling that when we get pushback, it's going to be that.
Yeah, it's just-
More than anything else.
I hate to say it, but to Tim's point, it's really not an option.
Right, well-
Like, for example, J F S. and C S E., J F S., C S E. A. and Children's Services, all as part of their job, it's mandated that they're multi-factors because of the systems they're dealing with, specifically SACWISs or, you know, Ohio Benefits or the E B T., all of that stuff, and there's no questions asked. I mean, because it's literally, quite frankly, part of your job description. And maybe that's how we need to look at it, is that other five percent, and I gotta be honest with you guys, this is where we can get tricky with H R., we usually have five percent, ten percent baked into everybody's job description, that it's for other duties and responsibilities.
Sure.
So guess what, we can go about it that way too if we need to.
Well, and I think, I understand, and you know me.
Yeah.
Garrett, more than stick. And I think-
We're like the yin and the yang.
I think offering-
I'm like-
I think offering people that explanation may be helpful to assuage some of those concerns.
Training would be definitely to your benefit. Just letting them know, you know, why we're doing it, reassuring them that it's not, this is not a bad thing. And like I said, actually, over a quarter of our workforce cor- currently, with J F S. and C S E. A. being almost two hundred employees, I mean, that's a lot of employees, and C S E. being upwards of a hundred, they do it every single day just to get into their system. They can't even log on to their computer until they have an M F A. So this is not atypical.
How many, how many have we converted over to, um, Office three sixty-five that we do?
I'd have to check the exact number, it's a hundred plus. And it, it, to add to all of this, this is all about security, using a password-
It is.
It has a limited level of security, this is adding another layer to it.
Yeah, to protect our entire county from multiple.
Correct, any length of password, any complexity of password can be cracked with the willingness, the willingness to do it. Any of the team to do it, they're going to, that's kinda what all-
The, the other thing that may be in our favor too is that M F A. is becoming more and more prevalent outside of us.
I agree.
So I think people are getting, we have the outside world kind of working-
Creeping in.
Creeping in and helping them, helping convince as well, 'cause people, you know, people get used to doing it a certain way. Oh, for me, you know, when it came up with the Office three sixty-five, it was just another one. The only thing was I had to do an app for it, that was the only thing different. So, you know, I've done, uh, we do two-factor authorization for a lot of things.
Yeah, yeah. Might be just, Julie Green, might be just, just simply adding a, an affidavit that you have new employees sign off on that they're required to use their personal cellphone for M F A. if needed, included in our policy and procedures manual and our bylaws, when we update it, we will definitely include that, um, maybe as part of the job description.
No, that's very good.
Because-
But you always have that five percent.
Well, absolutely, but when, at least when, you know, they're hired, they understand-
They understand.
-that they will have to use their personal cellphone for-
Right.
Potentially, especially if they're dealing with grants and things like that.
No problem.
I guess, Tim, the only question I have, so we use M F A. for Huntington Bank. So I have employees that have fobs, and then I have the app on my phone, like our fob- Like, are FOBs still a thing if people didn't wanna go there?
FOBs would be an additional cost.
It is an additional cost of the county, and it's actually a significant additional increase in cost.
It's been a, quite a while since I've actually. Looked at the price of FOBs, like, they're going.
Some banks use them.
Yeah, and I think these.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I know it's Bob Marano, so.
I've had that with it.
Sorry.
Julie asked a good question, what a FOB is, and I, I wanna be also fully transparent. So when I say there's no other way around MFA authentication, there is, the only way is a FOB. However, that wouldn't be an undue hardship to Trumbull County, in my personal opinion. It's double the cost associated, so it's about two dollars roughly, the last time I checked, just to MFA authenticate, right? It's about eight dollars to ten dollars on average for a FOB that we would have to provide to each specific person who refuses to do it, right? So, and that's, that's not a one-time cost, so you're gonna continue to incur that cost for that FOB every time somebody doesn't want to authenticate. So that's why I'm saying that's really not, that's not an option. And Trumbull County's incurring that cost, you know, so.
Yeah, Alexander, where do we stand on the deferred comp? Seen some emails going around with deferred comp and stuff, and we have that presentation.
Yeah.
Other type of deferred comp? Are both of those options available, and when is the signup time for that?
So we always have had the first. Uh, CCAO. The second one though, however, is through Equitable. I am in the process of reviewing their contract. Um, what I was told was, I don't really wanna get into it too much right now. What I was told was a free non-contract type of thing, the more that I'm reviewing it, there may be some fees associated, put on our employees. Now, that's not a problem, I mean, you, we would let you know that upfront, but I wanna make sure that I'm looking through it with a fine-tooth comb, because it sounded a little bit different than what I'm seeing, it's a, literally, it's a contract, it's a twenty-some page contract. So typically, when I see things that we do with, for example, retain health, that was just an agreement that we would work with Mercy Health to get people who have, um, injuries outside of work, so not working in comp, so if you come to us with a known knee injury, or you've had a heart attack in the past, and you need some sort of, you know, occupational, occupational therapy to do your job, those are free services provided to us. When I signed off with Phil Danzo, he was in full agreement, because there was zero cost, that was an administrative decision. This one is looking to be a little different, and they do keep hounding me, but I need to make sure that it goes to prosecutors. I need to make sure that I've done some of my due diligence, 'cause the last thing I wanna do is sign our employees up for something where they're getting a two point five percent chargeback rate, or whatever the case may be, I wanna make sure we're being transparent with our employees. There is always a deferred comp option, there has been, you can continue to use the one that we have, um, but the second one I'm still looking into, to be honest with you.
And then last, um, I guess to bring it up just for curiosity too, the Ernie Cook case, that's read about in the paper.
Yeah, so that was, um, well, I'm not gonna say, uh, dismissed, uh, but it is taken care of, uh, it is finalized. Uh, Ernie Cook will, um, agree to not, you know, obviously, be an employee of the county, uh, going forward. Um, and then we, uh, Corsa, you know, obviously, it's no news, it's in the paper, they settled for thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, it's not going to trial, case is closed, end of story, so that's another one.
And if people want more information on that, they can Google it, and there's.
Go ahead, yep.
Many newspaper articles about it, about the reasoning why, and.
Well, unfortunately, um, Corsa.
We're refusing paid for, so.
Sure. Uh, Corsa has the right, and I will state this until I'm pretty much blue in the face, 'cause I have to keep stating this over, not to you, but others. Corsa has the right, when we sign that agreement, they have the right to decide our fate, right? They're the ones ensuring us, it is not the commissioner, it is not Alexandria Divagenti Bush, it is not, you know, i- it's not what people keep portraying it to be in the media. Uh, no offense, Ray, but, you know, um, it's Corsa, we signed an agreement, they're paying up, they're ponying up for our losses. And not just Corsa, but seventy-two other coun- excuse me, seventy-one other counties, right? So we're one of seventy-two. So that means that it's a risk pool sharing, I'll say this again for the last time, we all have to cover, everybody else's premiums, including ours, are covering our losses. So Corsa has the right to settle, try, uh, go forth, negotiate, mediate, they're nice enough that most of the time they give us a seat at the table, which I'm extremely thankful for. Um, but at the end of the day, it's not our say. So Corsa felt it was best to settle, not go to trial, I don't disagree, problem solved, end of day.
Do we have to pay anything deductible wise out of?
Every time.
For that?
Yep, every time there's a fee, our deductible's twenty-five thousand dollars for errors in the mission.
So we pay twenty-five grand out of it, they're paying, they're paying ten?
No, we pay twenty-five thousand dollars, they're paying an additional thirty-five thousand dollars.
The deductible goes towards the attorney fees as well, isn't it?
It does, but I can tell you that the attorney fees have well, this has been going on for two and a half years. So the twenty-five thousand dollars that we pay.
I was trying to explain the math a little bit, yeah.
Is tiny, you know what I mean? It does go toward, in an ideal world, our deductibles would be enough to cover, to Mark's point, you know, whatever cost worth it has incurred. But when you're in, when you're going back and forth in depositions and, and sanctions and all this stuff for two years, that twenty-five thousand dollars is probably eaten up in the first couple months.
Well, there's nothing hanging over nine or one's head from here on in, they move, we move forward.
No. Nope, we're good to go.
No chance of any change in that.
Nope.
That's good.
Nope. All's good there.
Okay, anybody else have anything else to go to the county? Mike Solomon, why don't you grab a seat up here, Mike? Come up to the big boy's table. I'd say big girl's table, isn't the way I'm outnumbered with.
Why'd you say, I resent that?
I said, I resemble that remarkably.
Oh, she said, I resent that, I was like, oh, now you're gonna have another HR claim.
I'm not gonna, but.
Mike Solomon, I just wanted you to look up date with transportation with WRTA. Um, talked with Dean Harris, the MOU is in his hands, it's in his process, his lawyer. He hopes to get it to us by the end of the year, but if it does not, we'll have the MOU to us, first part of it, next year. I will get to our prosecutors, and we'll get a, pass the MOU for the transportation to start in April. So we're moving forward with that, it's not gonna, it's not hold, 'cause he knows, and he's working on the MOU, so he knows.
Have we heard from Warren or anybody else about kicking in to the three hundred thousand?
In regards to. Warren's gonna do fifty-fifty.
They will? They'll do a hundred fifty, we'll do a hundred fifty.
Yeah, um, and they're supposed to take it to the committee, you know, but, yeah, that's what they agreed with.
Good.
With fifty-fifty.
That's very good.
So that's where we're at with that.
Good.
Update, yeah.
Doesn't solve the problem, but.
No, it doesn't solve the problem.
It builds a little bridge, puts a little band-aid and Mercurochrome on it, and we're good to go.
It gives us. Right. Yeah, it gives us a little bridge till next year to figure out where we wanna go, so it gives us another year to figure this out, that I get to work on.
Old school.
Old school.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
I don't think they spell that anymore.
They don't, I think it's banned, it's probably caused people, they got to be a little nuts. Yeah, methylate too.
Yeah, methylate, some of the other.
Methylate and Mercurochrome, you won't do that. I think there's actually mercury in that.
It was the glad sound that they used, blather on us.
We all had it, though, we all had the orange. Yeah, the orange and the band-aid, yeah. And I was, that burned, or your mother's sticking the thing into the open wound to get the Mercurochrome on, it's what her's one of.
And it stained.
Yeah, everything.
Yeah. Okay, well, we're coming up at the end of the year, we've got one more meeting, one more meeting, so I'm sure we'll have a lot on the agenda for that one. The twenties is gonna be a big day. Um, I know everybody's inundated now in Christmas parties and all kinds of holiday doings and stuff like that, so everybody's busy. Probably a lot of vacation time is being taken up this time of year. The way the holidays run, we'll do our best to let people know when government is open, when they can come here, it'll be on the auditor's website. If anyone ever has any questions as to, man, I wonder if the clerk of courts is open today, I wonder when the hall, you can always check the commissioner's website, a link through, and our IT department does a really good job, and I'm sure you guys will keep up on when these departments are open, so nobody comes into a place and nobody's there. Um, the health department has moved, so they are in, open for business at their new digs in Cortland. So if anybody needs a subject permit, or to see the health department for any reason, uh, they're on Main Street in Cortland now, the old building, nobody's, nobody's there, so they won't be able to get in. Um.
What's the deadline for the rework meeting? The deadline for submissions to that, Julie Green?
Um, that is on Tuesday, right? That's on the second, January second. I mean, I'm gonna say, it, it probably needs to be Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, latest.
Yeah.
At noon, or?
Yeah. You need to have time to have your proof.
Right.
Or it's not really the first meeting of the year of the rework, so.
Um, now, the cafeteria downstairs is open, so any county employees can use it at any time. A lot of them, I've seen people use their fingerprints, and they caught on pretty quick. Um, we will get cards out to everybody and instructions on how to utilize it down there, how they can use their fingerprint, or, or preload their, um, marketplace AVI card, if they wanna do that, but I see things are disappearing pretty quickly and stuff, so we're getting some usage out of that. And any comments and stuff regarding that, they can send to me, I've already called a couple times for them to add dark chocolate milky ways and different things, different types of drinks. White milk, stuff like that that employees want, and they're very receptive, they pretty much get us whatever we need. So we'll have furniture down there soon, and, uh, charging stations, and the artwork, and that'll all be coming right after the first of the year, and then we'll do a dedication with AVI. And, uh, yes, Alexander.
Um, since you're talking about stuff internally, I would really like to thank all of the departments, um, if you take a walk around, I mean, just this week, it has blown my mind, the amount of spirit and holiday cheer, and the treasures are competing with the records, and we're supposed to be, we're competing, we're supposed to be competing as HR, but we are really far behind because we're so busy. But, I mean, the auditor's office has put up.
My Charlie Brown tree.
The dog baggage, the Charlie Brown tree, the fishing tree, I mean, it is so beautiful to see, I feel like our county kind of coming back to life a little bit, like employees and, and doing things, and I don't care what anybody says, morale and culture will win every day over everything else, so, I, thank you.
That's the goal here, to get better every single day, and make people get to a point again where they can pridefully tell their family and friends where they work, when someone asks them what they do, they can say it with a smile, and not like they're talking about the stint they did in prison.
Yeah. People, people are knitting scarves and hats.
And any more teardrop tattoos for employees here, cobwebs on their elbows or anything, it's.
Yeah.
Nothing but smiley faces.
Something wrong with them.
Um, Commissioner, people are knitting scarves and hats, the clerk of courts, and a passport office, I mean, it's, what they're doing is just beautiful, not on county time, um.
We got great employees, fantastic employees.
We do get breaks and lunch.
We do get breaks and lunches, I, I, listen.
I didn't know that till twenty nineteen, that I got two fifteen minute breaks a day.
Really? That's, no, that's fairly standard act, the break, the.
After nineteen, or?
Yeah, the rest period is our, for sure. The lunches, that's a little different, but.
Trying.
Yeah, you don't get to make that up, Julie, you can't disappear for a couple months.
About a couple of years.
Yeah.
Can you take all the ones you lost and buy new ones?
There you go.
Yeah, so for next year.
Well, it was usually for smokers.
Same thing with me and Phil.
Yeah.
And Martha, the, I, I know this, this was a big deal last month, um, but the increase in property taxes, that's done here, it's on the Columbus. And what's the process now, if somebody ignored it, skipped it, as a beef, they, they gotta deal with Columbus now?
No. After the first of the year, if someone is, wants to complain about their value, they can file a formal board of revision complaint with our office. The forms are online, um, that has to be filed between January first and this year, April first, because March thirty-first is on a Sunday. So that's their next step, if they want to, if they don't thi- if they're thinking their house is valued at too much, or even too little, you know?
And with the housing market, like you said, it makes sense, everybody's been selling their houses that above what they want for it. Housing market is strong, and that would show, I would think people want their houses to be, if they're selling it, they want it to be valued as high as they can. If they're paying taxes, they wanna say that it's not worth anything, but you've gotta be fair here, it is what it is.
Right.
You gotta take the good with the bad.
We, um, we saw more than a hundred people in informal reviews, um, came in, uh, they could sit down with our appraisers, as well as the outside appraisers, to get an understanding of what, of, of how that value is, we came up with that value. Sometimes we found mistakes, there's, you know, when you do a mass, anything, right, a mass reappraisal, you, you're bound to have mistakes, when you do things, you know, mass production, there's mistakes. So, um, you know, when we found mistakes, we corrected them, and, uh, for some folks, uh, they didn't necessarily have all the information, they maybe were gonna go ahead and get an appraisal, and then see us after the first of the year. So we've tried to be as, uh, cooperative as we could, as a matter of fact, we extended things pretty long, so much so that our abstract was actually late getting into the state. So, you know, we did the best we could, we wanted to do, be as fair as we could to all of our, uh, property owners.
Yeah, great job with that.
Ninety-seven.
And I, I know you probably took a lot of heat, needlessly, 'cause it wasn't your decision.
There's a hundred forty-four thousand parcels in Trumbull County, more than a hundred forty-four thousand.
So they appraised the parcel, the vacant parcels as well?
Yes, everything gets appraised.
I was just thinking housing.
Nope.
Wow.
Every single parcel, yeah.
That's a lot.
It's a lot. It's a big job.
Who do you go to for information on, not necessarily a appraisal issue, but if you think the information is not correct?
You can talk to, you can call, uh, the real estate, one of the real estate clerks, just call the office, and, and any kind of information, it doesn't have to be.
Yeah.
You know, and, and a lot of things don't affect.
Right.
The appraisal, because we go by square footage, we don't go by like, a lot of people are like, well, I have the same square footage, but I have more bedrooms, it's all, it's all by square footage. So if, you know, but you still wanna correct it and have it right in the property card, sure, and we want it to be right.
You sure can, you're up.
I would like to compliment.
On the.
New website.
Sorry, I'm in.
Oh, my name's Anita Brumbaugh, with it two one seven nine Salt Springs.
I'm sorry, you have to?
Yeah.
It doesn't bite.
I would like to compliment you on your, um, font, on your new website, it's so much easier to use than the other one.
Thank you.
Um, I was here, uh, last week, and, uh, upstate, uh, since last week, I have found another dead animal in my driveway. My granddaughter's lung collapsed from the bacterial infection, and still, since May, I've never been contacted by any. I was inspired by Mr. Canile Mesa, because the pen is my dear than the sword, so I thought I would bring photos, they're worth a thousand words. Little case I hand out.
Okay.
My granddaughter's son, she helped us, um, put a Halloween decoration inside on the septic tank risers after they had been wet. And she had, she got a severe bacterial infection with a. I had spoken to Heatherfield Township, um, county engineers, the EPA, the combined health district, FPD, um, tax auditor. Came out in twenty eighteen and devalued my house thirty-five thousand dollars, um, because we had so many, it was a vacant house at the time, my mother had just passed away. He came to the house, and there were so many rats and debris, that he went running from the house and devalued it thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, nothing was done, and twenty nineteen, um, after Ruon came, uh, because, um, my neighbors had put up an outhouse in their backyard, and there were heroin addicts living on the garage, and they were using the facilities and exposing themselves to me, and then they stopped using the outhouse, and then ran a pipe from their septic tank to the overflow, and when I complained about it, I was told I was being nosy. So this is where we are right now. Um, this is a, this is a photo from, um, two thousand six. Um, we are not rural, we are right on Salt Springs Road, we only have, I mean, six, seven lots, but there is a overflow that runs to Salt Springs, um, Marshall, Niles Carver, it flows down into the Holly Rock River. That what has happened now is, my neighbors across the street, the Wolfers, have built an industrial landfill, and they have, it's just simple physics.
There's no sanitary.
They have changed the topography of the land, where the velocity of the water coming down off of there is just so tremendous, that they're flooding all our houses out. My mother lived there for forty-seven years, my parents built the house there, we never had flooding like that before. My mother lived there for forty-seven years, my parents built the house there, we never had flooding like that before. You can see that the topography has changed so much that it's just flowing all the way down. Um, I, I have told people that they did, um, at least five hundred loads from the Ohio Leather Works site and I've had so much pushback on it that I know that somebody is not telling the truth about it. Need to verify, they left a mud trail all the way through Gerard for three months. I only know this because I was taking my granddaughter to Sunny Days, um, Sunny Days preschool, that I was following the trucks every day. And it's just-
Can I interject because our office, this is Julie Green, our office, um, administers or assists the city of Gerard with administering the US EPA funded leather works remediation program.
Right.
The resulting dump slips have to be, um, you know, in place in order for that funding to be used. So, we have, we would probably, I don't have them here with me, but it's my understanding that the dump slips, where the fill was taken is, uh, at a certified landfill and that would not coincide with what you're saying.
That's what nature of last week means.
This is a process stream for me.
They may have brought in from other areas, I'm just specifically speaking to Leather Works. Obviously, I don't have, you know, I wouldn't have any information on what Wolfers is or isn't taking in or, or picking up. But specifically for the Leather Works site, it's a US EPA cleanup grant, uh, and it has very specific parameters on what is done, how the remediation takes place, where the fill is then required to be deposited. All of that has been documented.
You said there was a gas station or something you followed a truck to once, where there's a gas sta- old gas station was taken out, which clearly wasn't Leather Works, so I mean, it could be.
I was just reading.
And what is your address?
Two one seven nine Salt Springs Road, McDonald's, Ohio.
Are you in the township or in the village?
Uh, McDonald's mailing address, but I'm Weatherfield Township.
Thank you.
Um, also, my neighbor has been running a home improvement business that runs straight into this. Uh, I would like to commend the Trumbull County Engineers, they came out immediately, they were fantastic. And they just said, the, as I said, the topography has changed so much that the whole Salt Springs, um, culvert is getting so backed up that there's just absolutely nothing they could do. And this is my, he has been running a home improvement business out of his house for, um, nine years and he is also dumping into this culvert too. This is what I live next to.
Is that a different entity than the Wolfers, ma'am?
He is at two one six nine Salt Springs Road.
So, I, I, just to comment on that, that is a function of township zoning, so you are aware.
Correct.
I, I, I just say that because we as county officials don't have the authority to-
Oh, no, I turned him in and he did absolutely nothing. And it's just dumping, burning, dumping, burning, and it's frustrating. This is a swimming pool, this is a swimming pool that he has filled, it's four feet deep with toxic ash. Leaches onto my yard, but I'm told over and over that I'm just being nosy. What I live next to, they just dump and dump and dump. These are, uh, the Filipino children that play on this, um, culvert that overflows with this toxic water. And, um, they have complained by engineers, they just said, it's just going to overwhelm, there's just nothing we can do. Over and over, I'm told to get a lawyer for what my neighbor is overwhelming the system. I was never, I was never asked if he could change it or, I mean, it's just dumping. This, this is next door, they just dump on this, uh, culvert that goes through all these, um, houses. I was flooded out with, uh, raw sewage, um, it was verified by union septic tank. This is the extreme flooding, it's overflowing my brand new septic, so it just backs up into my house. I paid fifteen thousand dollars and now I'm getting flooded out. Or just dumping, they just dump it to this culvert, nothing's ever done. And it goes through at least eighty houses, all through Marshall, all through the big houses. Um, daily, this, this, uh, landfill is getting bigger and bigger. Uh, it started out, um, maybe, maybe, um, thirty feet, now it's a good three hundred feet by at least seventy. And as you can see, there are, um, there are tandem dumps in there Monday through Saturday, eight to four. Nobody's monitoring this, nobody monitors the floodwaters, nobody knows who's over there.
Ma'am, again, Julie Green, your, your parcel is not located in a special flood hazard area, that's number one. Um, I imagine that the flow of water from their property, your property, has to do with, like you said, either the contours of the, um, the elevation, um, directed towards your property, but they're not in a special flood hazard area. The Trumbull County Planning Commission serves as floodplain administrator on behalf of the commissioners. And if it's not in a special flood hazard area, then it's outside of the county jurisdiction. However, again, that is a function of local zoning, if they're building something, our chief building official and the state of Ohio regulates landfills. Are you saying that there's an official certified landfill on that site?
They're dumping there every day, I, I don't-
Well, a- again, I don't know without looking it up or doing the research, but that would be the state of Ohio to, um, and I can certainly look that up for you, but that would be the entity that has jurisdiction over landfills. I know that permitting goes through our combined health district and the state of Ohio either issues a permit or doesn't for solid waste or hazardous or C and D D landfills depending on the type. So, it could be a hazardous waste, it could, and I don't believe it is, but there's, could be a C and D D, it could be a solid waste landfill and that is all monitored and also regulated through the state of Ohio. But I can certainly follow up with you on that. I, I, I just don't want you to think that we're not trying to be responsive, it's just that the county officials really don't have any authority over local township zoning.
And she, and when she came here last week, Julie, her defense, she's just looking for help from whoever she doesn't know.
But, yeah.
She's giving us all the facts.
I don't believe it's hazardous waste, but I do believe it's toxic waste.
Well, that's the same thing.
We have-
Yeah, hazardous and toxic waste are the same thing. So, I can certainly get back to you and get you a contact person if you're concerned with, uh, first of all, finding out if it is a landfill that's certified through the state of Ohio and then secondly, a person to come and talk to you, had, from the Ohio EPA or from the township. Have you been to a township trustee meeting?
Because I had, uh, four dead cats, dead opossums, few squirrels in my yard.
Well, no offense, but you are on Salt Springs Road, I imagine many of that could be roadkill. I mean, we get a lot of those killed in our-
You're welcome to come see the dead animal on my driveway right now, so that it's roadkill.
No, 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 I'm just saying it could be, that's all, I'm not disputing your claim.
We had a rain and now I have a dead animal laying in my-
I'm, I'm actually willing to help you find out more information.
Um, I submitted my formal complaints in twenty nineteen, um, uh, EPA, I never heard from them again. Immediately, within one week of getting my, um, septic tank, uh, power outage, it was overflowed and backed up into my house, a thousand dollars. Um, this is the type of flooding that we get. This is not normal. My mother lived there for forty-seven years, we never had that type of flooding. Now, they've changed the topography so much, this is what we get every time it rains. It took out half of my yard, it cost me ten thousand dollars. It backs up all the way up our yards, but now it comes in, um, all around us.
Very different calls when you're basically flooded. We have complaints from citizens that they can't hear.
And I just wanna show you, my neighbors actually put a boat out because they were afraid they were gonna be trapped in their house. And it's now my home basement because I get flooded so much and I have two, I have two sump pumps, there was raw sewage in my sump wells because what's happening is we get so much floodwater, it's backing up the culvert on Salt Springs Road that, um, I live in between two seventy-three year old septic systems, that, um, it just backs up into the drains. And as you said, um, as you said, I understand, I have been to Weatherfield Township, I was there in May, I spoke with Trumbull County Combined District. Um, nobody has done anything and, uh, Bugguard Your Home Improvement, they were running a business and, um, nothing was done. They built the outhouse in their yard and there were, um, heroin users exposing themselves to me and my granddaughter. Then they built, uh, they just ran a pipe from their seventy-three year old septic into this drainage ditch that backs up into all of our houses and flows onto, um, Rivera's property where all these children are playing. And that was there for approximately three months. And as I said, just, these are just photos of all the backup. Um, the, my neighbor's house, twenty-one sixty-nine, sat underwater in this floodwater for, uh, two weeks. And I spoke to the previous owner and he also testified in court that he is, in the thirty years that he owned it, he never had the septic system, um, flushed or pumped out. That this house sat underwater for two weeks in that seventy-three year old septic water. And now they have sold this house to a family that has children. And my daughter, or my granddaughter, was laying in the hospital with a bacterial infection and her lungs collapsed. And it's just, I, I, this is now my mission, I'm not stopping until this gets, this is very serious. You don't have dead animals in your yard. There are at least forty children around, something has to be done.
What is your name?
Anita.
Your last name?
Brumbaugh.
Spell that for me.
B R U M B A U G H.
B R U M B?
A U G H.
I'll send an email with, with what I think are your primary issues to all the people in charge and see if they reach out to you. You can give me your, your point of contact, um, I mean, we get a lot of complaints on a number of issues countywide. It's not unusual for us to reach out to people that we think might be able to address it. But a couple of the things, and I'm, I just wanna try to get more information from you. It sounds like the, the issue with your granddaughter, and I'm sorry that she's sick, that breaks my heart, truly it does, but it sounds like she was sitting on your septic tank or a neighbor's septic tank, is that what you said? Okay, and if your septic tank is failing, that is something that is the responsibility of the homeowner. And so, if the combined health district does come out and fail your septic tank, you're gonna need to replace that.
She said she did a new one.
You did it?
She has a new one, yeah.
Do you have an operation and maintenance agreement? Again, I'm just trying to get information. Do you have a maintenance agreement with an, an, an entity that maintains your septic tank?
Yes, um, because, because-
Who is it? Is it, can you tell?
Union septic.
Union septic, you, they do mechanical stuff, do you have an installer that comes out and does stuff?
Uh, the installers are not responsible after a year. Um, what happens is, is my septic is, works fine until it gets flooded and then it's overflowed.
So, the primary issue is the flooding from the backed up culverts on Salt Springs Road and you mentioned that you-
And runoff from across the street, she says that they raised the elevation, it runs off from the, where they're dumping across the street.
Okay, so, there's a number of entities, and I don't know if you've reached out to them or not, but this is who I'll be emailing the information to, so they have it, is the Soil and Water Conservation District, Combined Health District, the Ohio EPA and the county engineer who you said you've already spoken to, I believe Salt Springs Road is a county road.
Yes.
Correct? Have you spoken to anyone at the county engineer?
Oh, absolutely, this has been going on for two and a half years.
And so, the reason why the culverts are continually plugged is due to the, um, operation across the street, is that correct?
They're not plugged, they're overflowing, they're like a rapid, they're like a rapid. You could actually put a canoe on them, that's how, that's how high they get.
I don't, I'm not visualizing, a culvert is where water flows through, you're saying the water that flows through the culvert is a lot or?
The, the, um, this is part of the original Salt Springs, um, millennia. When I was young, I actually went back there and you could actually taste the salt in the water. What is happening is there is an official culvert on Salt Springs Road. Then it runs through all private property, all the way to the Mahoning River, over there on, um, Niles Carver.
Are there easements allowing that?
I have no idea.
Other obstacle.
But there are just so many, there are so many children playing in this water, the Rivera's have actually put their pool up there and they don't speak English and people don't understand.
So, it sounds like you've got failing septic systems that are being combined with stormwater runoff and you are concerned about that. And truly, again, I will email this to all the parties that are responsible for that, but the fix is either connecting it to a sanitary store, which is probably not gonna happen anytime soon.
No.
Or replacing the septic system on the one end, and that can be anywhere from fifteen to thirty thousand dollars for somebody, unless they receive grant funds, which is not really available right now, it could be available next year. However, the other issue you're talking about is this, um, the, what you're calling a dump site for Wolfers. And again, I don't have their background, I don't know, uh, if it's certified through the Ohio EPA, but they'll be made aware of it. But you're saying you've tried to talk to Ohio EPA, you've tried to talk to the township, you've talked to the combined health district, you've talked to the county engineer, talked to all of those entities and everybody says, mind your own business. Does that sum it up? Hey, well, I'll email, do you have an email you wanna share with me and I'll copy you on it?
Sure.
All right. Uh, you can do that, probably.
I wouldn't do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ray, are you guys doing anything with this? Yeah, I think a nice Sunday feature or something will get everybody's attention a little bit. Yep, um, and Julie, appreciate you volunteering.
Yeah, totally.
Nick had some answers for us last week, Marla tried to help her a little bit, but you've got more information on this probably than anybody when it comes to dealing with it, you've dealt with things like this firsthand, not that you can solve it, but you know people that can.
Potentially.
Potentially.
But, uh, again, it might be a private property issue, um, and it might be something that's outside of the county authorities. Because typically, when the county engineer is contacted, if it's something that they can address- Because typically, when the county engineer is contacted, if it's something that they can address, they do it immediately. So, I really don't think it's the county engineer with Salt Springs Road.
No.
I think probably, you know,
You're exactly right. Everybody keeps telling me, go get a lawyer. Go get a lawyer. I, I.
You don't even know who to blame yet though. It could be across the street. It could be.
When did the, um, the drainage issue begin? How many years ago?
Um, the, all the dumping from my neighbor next door, um, my chihuahua walked through his, um, flooding from his. Backed that up. Bug gardener home improvement. And then my chihuahua died. That happened a year, a year ago. But he has been dumping and burning for nine years. He filled our whole house up with, uh, so.
So, you think that the, um, drainage issue, the culverts that run on private property is being clogged by private property owners? That's why I asked if there are public easements.
Partially, partially.
Yes, I understand.
It's turned into, when I was young, um, the county used to come out and dredge that all the time. There's a big drain pipe because the original, um, Austin farm that was built there two hundred years ago. I even have, um, uh, an original two hundred year old well that tested positive for raw sewage. Um, the big farms used to do this and the county worked with them and did it. But the topography has changed so much that you just, you just can't have brushing water like that. Flooding out Salt Springs Road is.
I'll send an email. See what you get.
Anything, I would appreciate it.
If I can do. Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I just can't have any child sick there.
Well, I would recommend that you and anyone else that lives in the neighborhood not allow them to play in standing water if that is concerned.
My daughter be hanging with her and I have to watch my grandpa pass to come over.
Right, but they don't have to play in the standing water, is what I'm saying.
My whole yard slides. You, there's no getting over it.
You'll have to take her somewhere else. And I, I'm, I understand. I've been listening to people with issues of septic tanks for decades and I agree. You know, Trumbull County unfortunately does not have soils conducive to septic systems in general, even if they are brand new. Um, and so, it's been, it's an ongoing issue. We've been dealing with it for decades and will probably continue to for decades.
Agreed. Thank you.
Kind of hard to stop that one, but anybody else got anything?
You want to sit over here and put your.
Okay. Well, with that, I guess we'll conclude the meeting. Thank you all and we'll see you tomorrow at, uh, ten thirty.